Thank you for joining us this morning for the January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four Monastorino Community Center Committee regular meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few cost rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For today's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow people participation with the Community Center Committee regular meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a committee member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the chair and unable to speak with the committee. Only attendees using Zoom that location can use the raise hand option and comment to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to do that, and they can now provide feedback or comment. And lastly, when we're not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting must be taken by roll call.
Thank you. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Community Center Committee to order at nine oh two A M. On Wednesday, January the seventeenth. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Yes, public member Harrington?
Here.
Public member M. Allen?
Here.
Public member L. Allen?
Here.
Public member Rungansy?
Here.
Public member Warren?
Here.
Commissioner Seiler?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Councilmember Megachuck?
Present.
And Mayor Wolshimer?
Here.
We have a call. The orders of the day. Would anyone like to change the orders of the day? And I'm wondering if we want to put project status right up front. If, and I'm surprising staff with that, but if you're available, and does everyone agree to that? No.
No.
No, no. Okay. Then any other changes to the orders of the day? No, we'll proceed then. With that, world communications, any member of the public can speak on any item that is not on the agenda that is relevant to the community center and civic center. If you would, if you're appearing in chambers, please approach the podium. If you're appearing virtually, please raise your virtual hand.
No hands are moving.
Do we have people appearing remotely?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'll close public comment or all communications, and we'll go to written communications. Everyone receive the written communication?
Yeah.
Okay. New business?
No announcements?
Oh, okay. I will make an announcement. I met the Senior General of California Reserve at an event for Ukraine. And I asked him about having some, when we do our ribbon cutting, if we could have some F-16s fly overhead. And he said that he could make that happen. And he's the only person I've met that has a business card, and on the back it has two names. And he says, I said, well, I need to get your business card. So he added, is one of the two gentlemen whose name are on the back, give me their card. And they said, we're the ones to contact and speak with. Don't bother speaking with him because he'll never respond. But, and I thought that was pretty exciting. So, that's my announcement. Any other announcements? No? With that, item one, we will welcome our new commissioner. Thomas Connelly, he goes by Tom, I understand. And Steve White moved from site architecture to better streets, and that created a vacancy. And do you want to?
Sure, Tom, yeah, Tom has served on S and A now for a year, and he's been in the community for a very long time. And I nominated him to serve on this committee when Steve left, and he happily accepted and co-voted in. And he has a lot of experience with properties and such, and will be a great addition.
And he took the job because this pays a whole lot better than site and architecture.
And he's been around so long, he's known my, he knew my husband when he was a little boy. He's a sports coach, too. That won't be brought to bear here, but it's nice background on his community involvement.
Well, in the eighties, our kids played together because we lived about two hundred yards apart, maybe, Tom, yeah.
And he was nice enough to come today, even though he has a very cool head.
Welcome. And then we are going to elect a chair and a vice chair for the two thousand and twenty-four calendar year. I believe there was a staff report on that. Does staff want to introduce that or does our city clerk?
Um, do you want to take that?
I could say a few words. For all of our boards, well, Steve Lee and our city manager, for all of our boards and commissions, we have an annual election of chair and vice chair. So to remain consistent across all of those entities, including this one, which was newly created last year, this is the time of the year where we, the first meeting of the new year, where we elect a new or recommend electing a new chair and vice chair. So it will be held by a majority vote. Nominations could be made by a raise of hands. And more than one nominee could be essentially dominated. And I think the way we do it with our council is the last nominee gets, you know, voted on first. If we follow that same procedure. But I don't think we've ever had any difficulty on any of our boards and commissions with the process. It usually goes quite smoothly, so. Available for questions if need be. I'll be over here.
Do we do the chair first and then the vice chair? Is that okay?
That seems appropriate.
Okay. Nominations for chair?
I nominate Brian Metcalf check for the chair.
Thank you, Jane.
I second it, because you can second it, right?
Well, I think we have nominations, and then we have to have a, I have to take public comment, yes, sorry. Okay, I nominate David Wolshimer for chair.
I second it.
I guess you would, any other nominations for chair? Seeing none, I guess go with the, the second nomination first. Vote on that one first, I guess do a show of hands for Mayor Wolshimer as chair, and then a show of hands for councilmember Megachuck.
Okay, so for, okay, so we'll start off then with Lon's nomination of Mayor Wolshimer. Can we get a raise hand? There's a pains. So we have four. And then, can you help me? Usually, usually we don't have more than one.
Show of hands for councilmember Megachuck. One, two, three, four, looks like a tie. Now what do we do?
That's a good question. We do, we don't have one of our public members present, which would help with the breaking of the tie.
Well, I think we'll, I would think we would do another vote versus just leave it a tie. But maybe Ebert and I should say something.
Yeah.
Ebert, you want to go first?
Sure. I appreciate the nomination, and I gladly accept being the chair of this committee. And I'll tell you why. In the last couple of months, I have become increasingly worried about the project and where it's going. I think it was well expressed in former mayor Lawler's letter, and I agree with almost everything that she's said. I think the project has a significant risk, both from the schedule and from the financial point of view, let's see. I think the schedule, as I've seen it today, is not realistic. And it puts the city at significant financial risk. If we go over the December thirty-first date, which I think we will, we're going to lose the five hundred thousand dollars. If at that time we're right in the middle of construction, the city's on the hook for an extra half million dollars. So I don't mind that to happen. What I think we should do, if you choose electing chair, is table all the items on the agenda for today, come back in the very near future, maybe next week, with a different agenda. And that agenda would include the option of reviving the former design, which was approved by the council in September two thousand and twenty-one, which by our latest estimates will cost only half of what the current design will cost. The design was ultimately rejected by the city council because it was too expensive. Seven hundred fifty thousand dollars was considered too expensive. And now we're talking about a design that could be anywhere between one and a half and two million dollars. So I think it's time for a major reset. We need to do what's best for the city, what do the residents really need? I think that's what we should be looking for. Thank you.
And I'd like to add to that, the numbers that we saw, that I saw anyway, on a very elaborate and wonderful presentation, didn't include how we capture the gray water, what has to be dug up to put it underground, how it's pumped out, whether that's efficient or not. We haven't discussed and put into the numbers all of these, these ancillary projects that go with it. I think it's going to be a lot more expensive than, than what you say, because we're talking about the fence, we're talking about the barriers, we're talking about all sorts of things that weren't in that. Only the building was in that, it wasn't all the other things. And water is a big issue, an expensive issue. So I'd like to just tag on to what you said.
Can I just ask a question? Since you seem to know what the prior Community Center, because that was previous to this committee, what was the difference, just in general, like a quick answer on the difference between the two?
It did not change the outline of the building. It stayed, for all practical purposes, the same. It was basically a revamping of the building at a much lower cost than what they're looking at now. The question is really, what do the residents need? Not what, what do some people want, but what do the residents need? Again, I think a smaller community center where people can gather, where they can go to in case of an emergency, can recharge their phones. It can be equipped with solar panels with batteries, and have all the other modern facilities, but it would be substantially less expensive. And therefore, substantially, it is risky to the city. We're also running into a, I think by the city, we have to have two years of finances in reserve. And I think if the current project runs over significantly, we may violate our own finance policy by cutting into our reserves. So all those risks have led me to rethink the last couple of months, how I feel about this project. And I would really like to change direction here.
Anything else?
No.
I share the very same concern. And I raised it at our meeting on the twentieth to say, hey, in the worst-case scenario, cost-wise, in the worst-case scenario, timeline-wise, are we going to make it? And we could just barely make it. And I think that going forward, so, so there's two things. And I think I explained that before. First of all, in terms of, in the worst-case scenario, if it costs one point nine million or almost two million out of the city's pocket, then we would not have the reserves in place. So that, we just couldn't do it, you know? And, and that's why projections are so important. We have this, you know, look into the future and say, what's our best-case, worst-case, timeline-wise, cost-wise? Now, in terms of the grant from Silicon Valley Clean Energy, I think that if we get the bids back and, and we can make the timeline to twelve thirty-one in good faith, that's okay, and we'll get the grant. If we know going into it that we're not going to make the timeline, then we won't get the grant. Because we'll miss the deadline. If we have a plan that says we'll make the deadline, and there's some sort of a, of a reason why we can't, then I think that will be acceptable to Silicon Valley Clean Energy, because they just want it done. They don't want to, you know, they need this for showing other contractors and showing electrification. So in terms of the size of the community center, I think that it was this committee that gave direction to say, let's have as many square feet as we can, because we only have one chance to build it. That's the discussion that we had around this desk a year ago. And that's why we went to thirteen sixty-five square feet, and then we reduced it by forty square feet to make the fire, dead, fire code, so we didn't have to have sprinklers. Okay? The big issue that Gary Kohl sat had was if you have the big concrete deck that's going to be very expensive in the original design, you'll have way too much noise from Highway Nine. And that's why making it bigger did two things. It made the, the building larger, which is what the committee wanted, but it also shields the noise dramatically. So I think that, I believe that we shouldn't go forward if it's not going to make the timeline. And if it is going to make the timeline, we try to, we try to, and I'll use the words, put it, put the days in the bank whenever we can in terms of the process going forward. The other thing that I would like to say is we've got the Community Center survey results, and I think that that's fairly compelling as to what people are expecting, what people would like to have. So that's what I would, would propose. And I, I've spent two years working on this. And I know there's a lot to do. I think it's the single biggest project this city has undertaken since it's, since shortly after its founding. And I think that I would like to continue as chair, and I would ask for your support going forward. But at a certain point in time, if it becomes unfeasible, then I think that that's a significant issue that we have to raise to city council. And I will say last night at the city council meeting, council asked for a report from the Community Center Committee to them at their next meeting. So I would have volunteered a lot of my time on this, and I've spent a lot of time on it. And I think it's all good, and I think it's good for the city. But I wouldn't, first of all, we couldn't do something that would require us to go over our reserves. So we wouldn't have, like, that's just a hard, no, that's not going to work. But we need to, we need to forecast that, we need to manage it.
I, let's, I filled out the survey not knowing that there was an option. So I think the results, the K and W may be skewed, because I didn't know there was another choice. And so you say the community wants this or that. I'm part of the community, I filled out the questionnaire, but I didn't know. I didn't have all the information at that time.
I'd like to back that up. I never knew about the twenty-one plan until a couple of weeks ago. And if I had known about that, if there, the choice for you, seven hundred fifty thousand, a million and a half, or two million, I would have gone to the other one. Also, when I got on the committee, the size was already the new plan of the thirteen hundred. I didn't know there was a choice of doing a smaller one. And in terms of the survey, I think only twenty percent of the people said they wanted a fancy kitchen. So I just think that it's just way more than the, by Serena of fifteen cities, a county, has always been the most fiscally responsible. And if I'm looking at a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project as opposed to a million and a half or two million dollars, as someone who I thought lived here longer than anybody else, maybe, but apparently not, I would, with all due respect, I would vote for the more modest proposal. So that's my two cents.
Can I ask a couple of questions, too? Just as far as where we are, we have plans that are into the building department for the after post, right?
Yes.
And give us just a little short synopsis of where we are. Like, if we were gonna choose to move forward on this, it just doesn't seem like the timeline is going to work within this year at the rate we're going. Like, we don't have approved plans yet, right?
Yeah. So that's why I thought it would be good to have the timeline upfront. But I believe if you look at the timeline in the packet, it shows that the bids go out, I believe in February. And then if the contract is reported on the thirteenth, I believe, of March, and it takes nine months, it would be completed in December. And the ribbon cutting was in the plan, I think was December the seventeenth.
So, so sorry, but Chair Metcalf is right. This is, your question is probably more geared towards another item that's already on the agenda.
All right.
So I would recommend, I forgot, we didn't open it for public comment in the nomination. So why don't we open that, see if there's any comments? And then we'll go back to doing another vote to see if that's changed, and we'll go from there.
And I still have a comment, too. But that might be after, like you say.
Okay, well, then, do you want to do it after, then, the open?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think that one's over yet.
At this point in time, I'd like to open it for public comment. If you're appearing here in chambers, please approach the podium. If you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand.
There's more to hear me.
Lisa Shannon, some of you know me, some of you don't. I am the neighbor right next door. Listening to you guys talk about the money, it sounds like you're talking about for the building itself and not the entire site plan. Now, the entire site plan affects us a lot. Members of the city council know, I keep talking about, I'm very concerned about the plans for the water runoff, and I'm not hearing costs associated with that plan. I'm under the impression the site plan itself for the, you know, the concrete, now that's going to be more than the building of one and a half to two million. So we're looking at a significant increase beyond your one and a half to two million figure. So I just wanted to make that clear.
If there's anyone else that would like to make a public comment, please approach the podium or raise your virtual hand.
None is raised.
I'll close public comment on this and bring it back to the committee. Allison, you have a comment?
Yeah, my comment is, I'm concerned about the fiscal component, because the current estimate is one point five million. And it could be greater, because we haven't necessarily budgeted for everything. But even if you take the one point five, the former proposal was seven hundred fifty thousand in that neighborhood. So that's a difference of about seven hundred fifty thousand. A lot of that difference is things that Silicon Valley Clean Energy would like to see in the building, which are wonderful environmental sustainable features that we need more of in our world. I, I'm just concerned that in incorporating all of those, we're adding more to the cost than even, than we're getting in grant money. So it's basically costing us quarter million dollars more. And if, if we're going to take that expense on, we need to look at what do the residents of Monastorino want? And I'm a little concerned that we don't have a clear mandate from the survey results saying that, you know, we want convection cooking faucets, and we want all these features. And I'm a little worried that when we go back to the residents and we say, this project costs us X amount more, that we won't be able to justify to their satisfaction the reason for taking on that extra expense. And I'm a little worried about the grant money going away if we don't get that on time. So even, even though I think in this world, we need to think about our sustainable future, I just don't know that we have the mandate to kind of put that on the community center if it ultimately doesn't meet what the residents want for it, or at least with this current survey results. And I feel very conflicted saying that, because I know how much time and effort and passion you have put into this project, and it's more than I can do, I'm very impressed by it. But in good conscience, I just have to share that perspective also.
I'll respond and make, make another comment. I think that our costs that we've incurred to date on the planning for this is significant. And as I said, I think I said a few minutes ago, once we've got the plans that go out to bid, there's nothing that locks us into accepting the lowest bid or any bid. So we've always, we still have a go-no-go decision to make, and I believe that's at the council level. So, you know, at this point in time, is the alternative just to stop the plans? Or continue and see if we can make it? Where do you, or, you know, is, is the decision on you? So we're, we're getting off topic, I'm, I'm concerned.
So I guess I will ask if Lon, you made the nomination.
Yes.
Ebert, and then Mary, are you still seconding that? And also Jane, do you stand next to her?
I can't hear you.
Are you still nominating Brian?
I am still nominating Brian Metcalf check.
And Heather, does your second still stay with Brian?
Don't take this personally, but I think I'm gonna switch to vote for Ebert, because I feel like in every project, having a debate on the whole thing, even though we may end up at the same place, is healthy for the city. So I, I agree with everything Allison said, and I totally appreciate everything you've done and how much time, and please don't take it personally, but I think for the good of the city, I would like to change.
Is there anybody that was just to second Jane's nomination for Brian?
I have one comment. You talked about an earlier plan for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we went back to that, is there a chance we would go back to that, even if Brian was still our chair?
Plans have been approved, and the package was sent out for bid, it came back. There were four bids. The lowest one was rejected because it didn't qualify. The lowest qualified bid was accepted and then rejected by the city council because it was deemed too expensive.
Okay, I missed that, sorry. Okay.
Okay.
So now we're talking about, I don't even know.
Can I confirm then, is there anyone seconding the nomination for Brian? And seeing none, then we'll proceed with taking the vote for Mayor Wolshimer. Well, actually, at this point, if anybody in favor can raise their hand for the nomination of Mayor. For the nomination of Mayor Walshimer. So. Six. So six. Six to two. And you want to proceed with the vice chair?
Yes.
I have one other question. Does this mean Brian is gonna still be on our committee?
It was just the chair position, Jane.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have? Go ahead.
I would like to make a nomination. I would like to nominate Committee Member Lon Allen to be the vice chair.
One second.
Next week, we'll be married 56 years in terms of full and fair disclosure.
56 years.
Any other nominations for vice chair?
I would like to nominate myself.
I don't believe a person could nominate themselves, Karen.
I think it would be considered as volunteering.
I checked with Kirsten before.
Oh, well, then maybe someone could nominate me to be vice chair.
I nominate Brian Mecha to be vice chair.
All right, can I get a second for that? All right, we'll go ahead and proceed with Avery's nomination for Lon Allen as vice chair. Can I get a raise of hands? Six to two. And then not in favor? Two. So motion carries. We have Chair of Mayor Walshimer and Vice Chair, Council Public Member Lon Allen.
Thank you. I propose we take a five-minute recess. Is everybody okay with that? Get some coffee before we proceed. Okay, thank you.
We're still missing one. Mary. That's what you said.
And she's going to get her coffee. All the blessings that is there.
They said, actually, those are the best blessings. Somebody asked.
I didn't understand it.
They say those are the best blessings when you actually get, when someone says, you know, wishes to flood it in.
Yeah. That's what we say in Texas. God bless you all.
Calling the meeting back to order. I'd like to per se this was somewhat uncomfortable for most people in the room, but I think everybody's trying to do what's best for the city. And our views on what's best for the city are different, can be different, and that's fine. It's been a healthy debate. And as I said, I think it's time for a change or at least a reevaluation. So what I'm going to do now is, which I can do as a chair, is make a motion to table all the other items on the agenda with the notion that we will call another meeting probably very soon, next week or so, where we will discuss, including with staff, what our options are. I think we need to look at the current design. Not everybody's familiar with the old design. We need to bring that back out. There's a lot of material on that. So that meeting, that meeting, my view, we can review both plans and then ultimately make a recommendation to the city council. Because we cannot make that decision. The city council has to make the decision to change directions. We can only make a recommendation. So that's my proposal to table everything with that notion that we will come back here soon.
Absolutely. Yeah. Sounds like that was a second pro.
I'll give you a chance after. That's okay. Okay, all in favor? All against, opposed, two. Go to 62 to motion carries. Before adjourned the meeting. And Brian would like to make a few remarks.
So it is interesting the lack of visibility into the prior plans that have been referred to. And one of the things that we tried to do, and I think we did it successfully, is involve the community of this. And when we first set up the community centered committee, it was two members of city council, two members from site and architecture, and one member from the public. And then we expanded that to more members of the public because we had more than one qualified applicant. I think, Mary, that's when you came on board. And then we increased that to now five members of the public, right? And to site architecture. And previously, in the, in the building that was proposed in 2020, there was no involvement of the public. There was no involvement of city council. It was all completely hidden. And all of a sudden, we were given, here's a plan for the building. There's, we've done extensive outreach in the past year and change in, in terms of getting people to come and provide comments. We've done two surveys. We had the the Eagle Scout survey, then we had the second survey. And the communications within the city of Monte Sereno have been extensive. I mean, it's been in, in every communication that we've had, the Peaceful Mountain Monitor, the mid-year update, the state of the city, you know? And I'll even say that the donation by Joel Gambard of the sign from the John Steinbeck House. I mean, I think that was phenomenal. So, you know, I think this, I think if you say, well, let's just go back to the other one. I think it's an apple and an orange. And I think that through this process, we've involved a lot of the community. And I think that, you know, we shouldn't dismiss that. So those are my remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this point, I will adjourn the meeting.
My question is, were the original, what are we talking about at the next meeting? Are we talking about just the structure of the old plans and the physical structure and the new plans? Or is it going to be an all inclusive where we know what the water situation is, which is my hot button because we have such water issues on our property? Is it going to include everything?
That's, that would be the goal, yes. My question is, how much time does staff need to to put the two plants next to each other? And so we can come up with a recommendation to the city council. Because both plans will involve water management, will have to involve water management.
May I make just a quick comment? I mean, that bid, those bids were quite a while ago, right? So they're not gonna be accurate to what today's costs. If we could have at least apples to apples cost, it would be really helpful in looking at the whole situation.
Exactly. Definitely an option we have. We can discuss that at the next meeting, but we could actually send both plants out for bid. And so we can compare.
Apples to apples.
Yeah, absolutely.
Really quickly, before we move on to Jenny, because this was an item we made a motion to table the rest of the agenda, I would recommend we open it for public comment. And then there's none.
Is there anybody in chambers here who would like to address the committee? Is there anybody online?
You have any answers?
I'm a little bit of a rookie here. What I'm wondering is, is there a place where we could review the plans? That we could review the bids and to see how comprehensive the bids work with regard to what we know is a completed project?
I will, I'll talk to staff and we will bring as much material as possible to the next meeting.
Yeah, can we see, could I see it or anybody want to see it? So we don't belabor it in the meeting if we have some sense of it first.
So I was on the committee that reviewed the plans after city council rejected all the bids. And there was a report done to city council on that. And that's available online, but I think that our city clerk could email that to this committee to refresh our memory.
Yeah, I think I agree with Tom that before the next meeting, if we all have a chance to do our homeworks, it'll be a more intelligent conversation at the meeting. So I think that's a good suggestion.
Right.
Logistically, is someone going to contact the architect? Gary Colsette?
Hello, everyone again. Considering the discussion today, I think probably the best course of action going forward is not to say one plan is thrown out or the other plan is being accepted for, in favor of potentially a lesser plan. I would say the, the opportunity presents itself to bring all the information to the committee forward from the past. Probably going back to the September of 2021 council meeting, which includes the entire bid package, the entire plans. And then potentially what staff could do is send out both projects and get alternate bids and see what they come back as. So for instance, you know, ultimately, it will be the council's decision, but let's just say one comes back at a million and a half to two million, and then it comes back at, you know, 750,000, 1.2 million or whatever, the council could make a decision at that point. But that might be a course of action. But at the very least, we'll work in conjunction with Mayor Walshimer before the next meeting to get the information on the previous. before the next meeting to get the information on the previous design to the committee members prior to your meeting as part of your meeting package, as well as, you know, maybe all the bidding information if that's allowed. And keep in mind, this was a couple of years ago, so the scope of the project was a little bit different. There was some flat work. But the entirety of the project, I think, with the parking lot redo and everything, was about eight hundred and fifty thousand. And yeah, it, as far as trying to compare things like the landscaping plan and that kind of stuff, I'm not sure if we have those level of detail, but.
This was city manager for the previous bid, wasn't there around a $200,000 grant from the state of California to offset the the 2021 cost?
So we had two grants. One was from Silicon Valley Clean Energy, which we still have, which would probably be still applicable to that project. And then we had Prop 68 funds, which was, you know, to combine, they were about 200,000. The Prop 68 funds, I think we probably used up most of that with the previous design and the current design, the process we've been through. However, you know, with the previous design, it may be that we can work with Silicon Valley Clean Energy to apply the $500,000 grant to the previous design. I'm not sure that's entirely out the window because I think one of the main requirements of the grant would be to just remove the gas stove, the gas meter. So we might look at that project and re-scope it a little bit. So as was alluded to by some of the members here this this morning, that can incorporate some of the green features, some of the clean energy features into it to meet the spirit of the grant. I, you know, I'm just speculating, but I don't. We got a little bit of work, staff has a little bit of work to do, and we'll try to get a lot of work done right to our next meeting.
All right, I will work with staff on the timing and the contents of the next meeting and make sure that everybody receives as much material as possible, as early as possible.
So is the next meeting still on the 21st of February?
No, I think we should have a meeting way before that. I would I don't want to make a guess here, but I would like to have another meeting sometime within the next two weeks. But I'm gonna work with our city clerk to hold people's availability for the, for the next meeting.
Can I ask a question? Is there any way to go back to the contractors that previously bid the job and say, hey, we're thinking about reviving this. What would be the cost in today's dollars? They might be able to do it just because they know how to bid jobs and it's a certain percentage more, so that we are again apples to apples.
Is that an option?
We could pretend, we'll have to ask the city attorney. That's what would create an unfair bidding situation, just in case they were going to bid on it again, right? But we do have an estimator as well that we're working with, of course, on this project, so we can ask another estimator to do that. Ultimately, he'll never know what the exact price is until
The bids come in.
The bids come in. And that's the unfortunate thing about this process. You know, that's why I would recommend not necessarily giving up on the old project. Or, you know, the, when you have been talking about the new version of the building at this point in time entirely, I would probably recommend, as our city attorney mentioned, we can build alternate, bid, bid, build, bid alternate versions or variations. If that's possible.
Having spent a fair amount of time on understanding the grants, the first grant was for the 14,750, I think.
Eighteen thousand, seven fifty, I think.
Eighteen, seven fifty. That grant was for resiliency and decarbonization. And I believe that grant expired on December 31st, 2023.
We got an extension for one more year. One more year on that?
I'm not sure exactly, but they're evaluating it now.
Okay. We have, I believe we have an extension on that.
And so, so that was to be done. You're not allowed to have carbon, so natural gas. And I believe the building had natural gas in it, including the heating system. So I don't think that that would qualify. And I know the $500,000 grant is for 100% electrification. So we would not qualify for that. I think that if we change the scope and it ends up costing us, you know, more than a million dollars, one point two, one, a million dollars, which is a thousand dollars a square foot, is that the previous building was nine hundred, sorry, the existing building is 949 square feet. That would have a difficult time passing city council approval. So I think that if we don't get the grant money from Silicon Valley Clean Energy, I think that it's, it's in jeopardy of even happening. And anyways, I.
Thank you. I, I know what you mean. Yeah, yeah, it's clear. Will, I will work with staff on the agenda and the timing of the next calendar, the next agenda, and you'll hear from our city clerk to call you on the, on your availability for the next meeting, hopefully within the next two weeks. And I will work with staff on preparing that. So I will adjourn the meeting at 9:59.